Good. Well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 4, 2021, meeting of the Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Chairman Steven Boulay. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, excuse me, affirmative. Mr. Rota Lakus. You are muted, Steve.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Rao.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Cahill.
Present.
Thank you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Shrewsbury Planning Board is convened by telephone conference, video conference, as posted on Sound's website, identifying how the public may join. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has had, who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first, and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking, as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For public items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. That being said, our first item of business is to review and approve minutes, but before we do that, I'd like to first welcome our newest member to the Planning Board, the familiar face. Mr. Purnarao was an associate member for the Planning Board for probably a couple of years anyways, right, Purna, two to three years, and has now taken on the Purna role. Kind of leading into a little bit of the comments, board member comments at this point, but that would also mean that there is an opening for an associate member on the Planning Board, which I believe the town may have posted either yesterday or is planning to post shortly. So, anyone in the public interested in becoming an associate member on the Planning Board, please inquire at Town Hall. So, our first item of business to review and approve minutes. The minutes are from August 6, 2020. I will go around the table to find out if anyone has questions or comments first. So, Mr. Rota Lakus, any questions or comments relative to the?
No, no questions or comments, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no questions or comments either.
Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions or comments.
And I do not have questions or comments either, so I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Thursday, August 6, 2020, minutes of the Planning Board as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Our next item of business is to review and sign bills. I have three bills here, one from Graves Engineering for 235 Main Street, and the amount is $1,009.65. Second item from Graves Engineering for 270 Green Street for $1,972.70, and a bill from GZA Geo Environmental Incorporated for Wyman Farms for the retaining wall peer review for $5,750.16, totaling $8,732.51. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
I am in favor.
Mr. Rao.
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Okay, that brings us to our first meetings and hearings. We actually, we have a meeting, I'm sorry, a request for a de minimis change for address 51 to 53 Babe Dude Drive duplex. Are the applicants present?
Yes, this is Bill Higgin, what Higgin is hearing.
You are very muffled in your voice.
Yeah. I have a problem with my computer. How if I do this, move over here a little bit? Is that better?
It's a little bit better. Why don't we, why don't we give it a try? And if we run into problems, I'll let you know.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm apparently having problems with this computer. So, at the, we were at a meeting with the Planning Board a couple of months ago, and we changed the, the original plan, bringing it from a tiered wall system to a single wall. The Planning Board approved that as de minimis change. When we went to conservation, they were very strong about the fact that they wanted the tiered wall back. So, we reversed gears here and changed it back to a two-tiered retaining wall system. The, the wall is slightly different from the original layout, but it still has the same intent that they, that they liked from their perspective. So, basically, this is really, the, the constitution now has approved this plan. So, the idea is that we just need the Planning Board to approve the, the new wall location shown more in blue on this plan, and the old wall location is shown red. So, they're nearly identical, but just a different, a different layout and a different stair system.
Okay, would you like to expand just a little bit on what the stair system changes were for anyone in the public that has an interest?
Sure. The original stair system in red had an integrated stair system within the walls, so the walls were separated, and it would have had to been a but a 12 or 14-foot-high wall built, basically, on the backside towards the building, and would have had to wrap around kind of where the stairs are shown on the, 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 the red line closest to the, to the building is the first set of stairs going down to a landing, excuse me, to a landing. Then it would reverse and go back down to grade and pop out near the, where the, the L-shaped section of, of red line is to the left. The new stair system basically comes straight from in between. And I think, Bernie, you do have another, another plan that, that is just, shows just the, the wall without the overlay, which may be handy. But the new system comes directly in between the two decks, goes down a set of stairs along the face of the new blue wall, and then turns and goes over the wall and then goes down the face of those, of the second blue wall towards the water. And this, this is an overlay plan that we were using for presentation, but Bernie, if you can bring up the, the actual plan.
I don't see. Um, Bill, I don't think I have, this is the only one I have on PDF. So, I don't know if you have another one.
Via TDS, I can, I can.
I think this is pretty good for demonstrating it personally. I don't know if board members have any questions?
No, I agree that it's, it's sufficient for myself. Do you have anything else to add, or are you complete?
Nope, I think that that's it.
Okay, very good. I'll first.
So, I'm sorry, I did, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I did have one other thing to add. The original ZVA approval had the decks as being 12 by 20. The last set of plans we had by the Planning Board, they were 16 by 28. And so, the, to keep the ZVA permit intact, we've now brought the decks back to 12 by 20 on this plan as well. I apologize for that.
No worries. Thank you for the clarification. All right, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? I'll start with Mr. Rota Lakus.
No, I'm all set with this.
Mr. Gary.
I'm all set as well.
Mr. Thomas.
No questions.
Mr. Rao.
Uh, no questions, thank you.
I have no questions either, seeing how we're, actually, I'm almost back to the original plan that was, that was approved, so I, I'm satisfied with, with what we have. This is the public, actually, de minimis change, it's not a public hearing. So, at this point, if there's no other questions, comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we make a determination that the change as requested by the applicant is in fact de minimis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
Mr. Boy is in favor as well. We should be all set, arrogant.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is another request for a de minimis change for Shrewsbury Maple LLC, location 378 Maple Avenue. Mrs. Nichols, are you ready to share with us what, what you have?
Yes, thank you. I think Bernie has the plan.
Uh, yep, one second, I am just bringing it up now. All right, you should be able to see it in just a second. Susan, I'm gonna present, do you want me to present the redlined one first? Is that okay?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we had come before the board about a year ago for a site plan modification to this project, and since then have made some minor modifications to the site plan. I'll run through them briefly here. In the, the red bubble to the top is circling basically the access gate that we are proposing in the rear for the drive aisle. We shifted it slightly to the east just to line it up with the corner of the building, just for better alignment. With that, we extended the dumpster pad to come all the way out to the same location as the gate, and we added a Knox box per request of the fire department for their access to the gate, emergency access to the gate. The second change is in the immediate front of the building, the strip building. The previous plan showed some seating in front of the eastern part of the bu, of the building, so there was sidewalk there. Yeah, Bernie's switching over to the approved plan. So, the, that seating that was envisioned for in front of that section of the building, we removed that and we added four parking spaces, and with that, we also changed the accessible pedestrian access to the sidewalk from all the parking trays. Go back to the other one, you'll see the difference. So, we, we made these tongues, so to speak, to coming out from the sidewalk. They're all accessible and crosswalks all the way across, just, just to make it a little bit better accessibility to the front of the building. So, that increased the parking in front of the building by, I don't know how many spaces. Overall, our, our parking count goes up by four. We increased a bit here, and then we, we lose a little bit around the pad building. And the change at the pad building was to accommodate a transformer pad that Selco had included in their design plan when we got to the point of actually designing the electrical work that we're doing there. They're requiring us to put a transformer pad, so we needed to expand that bed that was there, and that took away a parking space, and we also shifted a handicap parking space to the front side of that building. So, like I said, the, the net of all the parking changes is actually an increase of four parking spaces. And the last change, right, 560, the last change is, just has to do with the bus shelter was on the left side of that landscaped bed. We moved it to the right side because we felt it was safer location, since the, that's sort of the main drive aisle and that, that entrance coming up. We just felt like having the bus shelter on the other side was, was probably not as safe. We also felt it was a better location in relationship to where the bus will stop at that island. And that, I think that is pretty much it.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I have one question, Bernie. It's the addition of the four parking spaces is not a problem, right? Because I think they're already under their allowable parking.
Yeah, it's actually a net benefit. They've had ZVA approvals in the past to be under the required parking amount, so this actually increases the overall parking count, which is a good thing for the site.
Thank you. Hey, if there are any questions or comments from the board, I'll entertain them now. Mr. Rota Lakus.
None of these modifications did this, did impacted any of the drainage structures or as to what's going on beneath the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm off that then.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Jerry.
I'm all set too. No questions or comments.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
Uh, just one question. The outdoor dining for the other spots or outdoor dining area, is there all still staying?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you. Mr. Rao.
No questions, Chair.
And I don't have any questions either. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we make a determination that the changes requested by the applicant are in fact de minimis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you, and you should be all set, Mrs. Nichols.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Our next item of business is continued public hearing. Mr. Rota Lakus will be recusing himself. This is for site plan approval for ME Realty location 5 to 9 Centec Boulevard. I have a note here that there's a request for continuance. Mr. Cahill.
Uh, that is correct. We received a continuance request for, until, excuse me, until the March 4, 2021 meeting.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments relative to the request for continuance? Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions about that, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
No questions.
Mr. Rao.
No questions.
Well, I have no questions either. I want to entertain a motion to continue or continue this public hearing to March 4 at 7:00 PM.
I move that we continue the site plan approval for ME Realty LLC, location 5 and 9 Centec Boulevard, to the March 4, 2021 Planning Board meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. This is going to be continued. Our next item of business is medical office site plan approval for location 235 Main Street. I also have a note here for request of continuance. Cahill.
Correct. We received, also received a request for continuance for this one until the March meeting. They are before, or continue to make their way through, I should say, the conservation commission process, so they're still working out the plans with them, and hopefully by next month we'll have updated plans for you.
Very good, thank you. Any comments or questions relative to the request of the continuance? Mr. Jerry.
Uh, no comments or questions. Mr. Thomas.
No, sir.
Mr. Rao.
No comments, sir.
I have no questions or comments. Oh, Mr. Rota Lakus, you can actually be on this one.
No questions or comments.
All right, Steve. All right, I have no questions or comments. Other, I will accept the motion.
I move that we grant the applicant's request to continue the public hearing on the medical office site plan approval and special permit until Thursday, March 4 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In, in favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rao.
In favor.
And I am in favor as well. Our next item of business is continued public hearing for accessible housing for children, elders, and disabled LLC, location 270 Green Street. Are the applicants present? I can hear you.
Hey.
Hey.
Please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'm James Stater from Thompson Liston Associates, here with James Fencasa from the applicants. And we were in front of you at your previous meeting, and we had a review by both the town planner and the peer reviewer Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering, which cited some, several issues each to address points of clarity and to refine the design. We did several things to try and improve the clarity. It is a somewhat busy plan, understand? And I think a couple of the peer reviewers' comments were, without, without trying to sound derogatory, were mistaken because of, we had, we had made a plan that was very hard to read, so I apologize for that. But we changed the way the existing contours are shown in response to the peer reviewers' comment about the proposed one-to-one slope to the southwest of the proposed garage. We added a small retaining wall and changed that to a two-to-one slope, so there are no, no proposed slopes steeper than two-to-one on this, on the project now. We all, we may, also added a stormwater report checklist at the request of the peer reviewer to show that we are in accordance with DPP regulations, following their guidelines for dealing with stormwater erosion control and stormwater treatment. But we, it is the same duplex building as shown previously, the same garage building as shown previously. And we again clarified another point in regard to that was raised, that there's an existing access easement, which runs from Green Street up to the drainage easement, which conveys outflow from the detention basin to the water quality swale. And the reviewer correctly noted that we're going to be grading in that area, making it, it's not so accessible right now, but making it less so. And we are going to, you can see on the driveway, you see some listed bearings and distances. Yep, and we're gonna have, replacing the existing access easement, which is about 50 feet to the west or to the left of the driveway, with an access easement over the driveway, and it actually will provide better, a more, make it a more accessible situation than it is right now. So, we, again, we answered a, clarified several points for both, I think, the town planner and the peer reviewer, and I believe we've got a, a review letter now from the peer reviewer, which does not cite any outstanding items as, as needing to be resolved.
Okay, I agree. Anything else to add? I'm sorry, do you have any, so are you, are you done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Try and answer any questions, sorry.
Okay, I'll start first with Bernie. So, Bernie, the applicant appears to have answered all the peer review questions. Is there any outstanding items that you're aware of?
Uh, not at my end. We received and I uploaded for the board yesterday the final review letter from the peer reviewer Graves Engineering. If you do read, if you had a chance to read through it, there were no outstanding items or issues that he had. Everything seemed to be addressed from his end, and most of my questions were clarification questions on my letter, and those were addressed on the site plan, so I don't have anything else to add at this point.
Okay, one other question. I think I asked you this earlier. Did, so conservation is complete with this as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, I'll ask the board first if there's any questions or comments relative to the site plan at this time. Mr. Rota Lakus.
I'm all set with this. From the last meeting, the comments were pretty minor, so it looks like the applicant has cleaned everything up.
Okay, Mr. Jerry.
Uh, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Rota Lakus. No further comments.
Mr. Thomas.
And I agree with both of them. No comments.
Mr. Rao.
No comments, Chair.
Actually, you know what, Mr. Cahill, I have to get a point of clarification. Can Purna vote on this particular matter?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. He hasn't sat on it, so no, he can't.
All right, so, thank, thank you for your interest. Mr. Robert, unfortunately, I can't take a vote. Okay, everyone should have received a draft decision.
It is a, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing still, so.
I apologize.
Probably want to go and see if there's anyone in the public on the line wants to weigh in, and then close the public hearing.
Thank you for that clarification. If this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wish to be heard? I'm gonna take that as there is no public comment at this time, so I want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Uh, Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Everyone should have, as I started to say earlier, everyone should have received a draft decision. There were no waivers requested for this. I do want to note an item on decision, item two, that the applicant shall submit a signed and authorized copy of the lease agreement between Affordable Housing for Children, Elders, and Disabled LLC and Conca Sitt Incorporated to the Planning Board prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The only other, I'm sorry, I skipped over, I wanted to also mention on number one, because this was something we discussed during the public hearing at the last meeting, item number one on the decision, the detached garage shall only be used as an access, accessory to the primary use of the main building on the subject lot in accordance with Section 2 definitions accessories building, as well as Section 7C of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. Any change in use of the detached, detached garage shall require application and approval of a modification to an approved site plan with the Planning Board. The rest of the items in the decision are pretty standard for, for general permits, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled "Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval 270 Green Street."
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he did, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. We're all set. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is a site plan modification, site plan review. Mr. Rota Lakus will be recusing himself for this item. It's for a new public hearing. Although there is a request for continuance for this, I would like to open the meeting, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Thomas to please read the public notice. I'm sorry, I should define this a little bit more. It's a new public hearing for location 230 Cherry Street for the Polito Del, Polito Development Corporation. Mr. Thomas.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public
The Shoesbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, February fourth, two thousand twenty-one at seven P M. To hear the application of Polito Development Corp., five eighty-seven C Hartford Turnpike, Shoesbury, Mass. oh one five four five. As required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw sec- section seven F three for site plan modification by the planning board to allow for the modification of parking and associated improvements at two thirty Cherry Street. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled Proposed Site Plan Modification in One Sheet dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by Quinn Engineering Incorporated, P O Box one oh seven, Paxton, Mass. Zero one six one two. The subject is located northerly of Hartford Turnpike and westerly side of Cherry Street and consists in whole or in part of Shoesbury Assessors Tax Plate forty-eight Lot zero two five zero zero zero. Copy of the plans may be seen on the planning board website at H T T P S colon backslash 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 Shoesbury Ma Shoesbury M A dot gov backslash nine oh five backslash meeting dash materials.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, as I mentioned, there is a a letter of continuance, Mr. Cahill?
Yes, thank you. We received a letter of continue uh request for continuance uh till the March fourth uh twenty twenty-one uh meeting.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the board regarding the request for a continuance, uh, Mr. Jerry?
I have no comments or questions.
Mr. Thomas?
No comment.
Mr. Rao?
No comment, Chair.
And I have no comments either, so I will entertain a motion to approve the request for continuance to the March fourth uh meeting.
I move that we continue the site plan modification uh for Polito Development Corp. Uh, it is a new public hearing, uh, location two thirty Cherry Street to the March fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting at seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
And Mr. Buay is in favor as well. That does it for public hearings. Our next item of business is new business. Uh, item A is to discuss and vote request for zoning warrant articles to the Board of Selectment for Annual Town Meeting twenty twenty-one. Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, it's hard to believe, but it's that time again. Um, so this is a request so on behalf of the planning board. We do this every year prior to town meeting, a few months before. Um, where the board or the planning department requests of the board to um send a letter to the selectmen asking to put certain uh zoning warrant articles on the warrant for the town meeting. So that's the point we're at. Um, what the planning department this year is asking the board to put in a request to the selectman for is um, the first thing is the cleanup of the town center district zoning boundaries. So when the town center, the new town zoning zik town center, say this ten times fast, town center zoning district was created last year, we overlooked, and by we, I mean pretty much everyone overlooked that there are some tiny pieces and slivers of land outside of that that were left orphaned in the limited business districts. So they are as small as twenty-four square feet to slightly bigger than that. Um, nothing too big. But they are kind of just hanging out there in limbo as these tiny little pieces of limited business. And because we didn't put it in the language, we couldn't act upon it, so it has to go back to town meeting, unfortunately, for cleanup. Uh, it really wasn't until our G I S coordinator made that map based on what we had asked for last year that we realized these tiny pieces were still out there. Um, so we're gonna go forward with that. We thought since it was done right away, it's fresh on people's minds, let's get it out there and clean up right away, so we don't have any issues. Um, the second one is, for those of you who are familiar with the zoning board of appeals, um uh, section four B about increases to uh fifty percent increases on non-conforming properties, right? So if you need to create uh an addition or increase the size of your house, you you wish to do that, um up to fifty percent is the way it's written right now in the zoning bylaw. You can do it by special permit. Um, and up until now, we've been asking or requesting a variance from applicants if they want to go over that fifty percent. Um, recent case law, that's been brought up to us by town council, has shown that for the most part, that is no longer in line with what the law is allowing at the state court level, that they are allowing increases over fifty percent, provided they need a special uh, I need a special apartment only, not a variance. So we would like to have that addressed. We don't have the language yet. That's something I'm gonna work on with town council to make sure we amend uh section four B, and so you have some uh language to to work with and see uh when we get to the public hearing stage of this. So that was the second one. The first one was town cleanup of zoning. Uh, the second one was the fifty percent increase, um, not meaning a variance, or I should, right now, we're just gonna do it as a request to amend section four B to the Board of Selectmen. And then finally, um, we have a subsection in the uh zoning bylaws for accessory structures and uses, which is incredibly confusing. And if it's confusing for me, the staff who work on it every day, uh, the, all of the building inspectors, um pretty much the whole staff and all the residents and developers, uh, we really need to clean this section up. This is for things like sheds and pools and uh accessory structures over two hundred square feet, under two hundred square feet. Where do they go? What are their setbacks? Right now, it's all over the place, so we thought this was a good opportunity um to clean that up. So those are kind of the three big things. Like I said, clean up the town center zoning district. Uh, what was left over, those those orphan, I call them orphan pieces. Section four B to amend that, and then to amend uh accessory structure subsection, so which, of course, I didn't write down what subsection is of the zoning bylaw. But so I guess this board, as we've done in the past, would have a vote to instruct the town planner, me, to write a letter requesting these um zoning articles be placed on the the warrant for town meeting twenty twenty-one.
Okay, uh, one quick question though, Bernie. Do you feel that you'll have the language and everything cleaned up for these three items by the time that, because we generally have at least two meetings that we do prior to town meeting?
Oh, yes. Yeah, so actually, if we did April and May, we would have the tallying. So we would advertise for the April meeting for a public hearing and then do a public hearing again at the first first week of May, and then town meeting at the moment is scheduled for, I believe, the seventeenth, that Monday, if it's the seventeenth or eighteen, whichever is the Monday. So we would have those two hearings um in place. I'm hoping to get started on this already, so you'll start to see some some draft language, but we wouldn't discuss it until that April meeting. Next one's gonna be pretty full anyway, so I don't think the board wants to take it at the moment, but uh yep, so again, it would be a vote to instruct the town planner to request these um warrant articles as described to you this evening uh to be placed on the the warrant for town meeting.
Okay. Do I have any questions or comments from the board relative to this, Mr. Rodelakis?
No, it actually seems pretty straightforward, something we should be able to tackle in a meeting.
Okay, Mr. Jerry?
I know I have no comments or questions.
Mr. Thomas?
No, no comment.
Mr. Rao?
Uh, no comment. Just want to make sure that G I S kind of gives all the changes, whatever that's needed to do, so that we don't have to come back again, you know, so just follow up with them to make sure we got all of them covered at this time, you know?
Yes, I will double check with Dan McColl and make sure we we've got it this time.
Yeah. And I I agree. I think these are items that hopefully we can get a language in it and all squared away so that we have time to discuss them at the two town meetings, uh, two planning board meetings prior to town meeting. So I will entertain a motion to have the planning department request a letter to send a letter to the planning, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen to allow them to work on these three items?
I I move that we authorize the planning department to uh send a letter to the Board of Selectmen uh relative to the uh map, zoning map change, uh the uh text amendment change uh relative to the uh
Section four B.
Section four B and the text amendment change relative to uh the um accessory structure uh to Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rodelakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
Um, I'm in favor, but I would like to continue to recuse myself from anything relative to the town center district.
Very good. So you you can be in favor for the letter. We'll just
I'm in favor of your letter.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Rao?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor as well. So just probably some more work to do there, Bernie. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
That's all right. Thank you. And um, I believe that's it for the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I believe it is. So this is the last item I have on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You're muted, Steve.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rodelakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
Mr. Buay is in favor as well. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening and stay safe.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.